Testing.
We can hear you. There is an echo, just so you know.
Okay. And just so you know, Kevin's all the way on the other side of the room.
I'm gonna give it about another minute. It looks like we have everybody, everybody in here. Well, I have 7:30 on my clock and we definitely have much to cover tonight during this May 18th committee of the whole. I'll continue monitoring the waiting room. In case anyone joins late, I'll make sure to enable them to participate in the meeting. As always, there are a couple of housekeeping items to cover before we begin. First, for all those who are joining us via Zoom or in the city council chambers, you'll be afforded the opportunity for public comment to address the city council on matters that are on tonight's agenda. After the city council has had the opportunity to discuss that item with staff, members of the public who are present at city council chambers listening to this meeting will be afforded the opportunity to provide public comment in accordance with the procedures applicable to public comment at an in-person meeting of the city council. Namely, those members must have signed in before the start of this meeting, which was at 7:30. Members of the public who are present in city council chambers listening to this meeting will be afforded the opportunity, as I mentioned, and those who are on the Zoom will also be provided the opportunity to participate in public comment. Any written comments that we receive prior to tonight's meeting will also be read. And with that, I think we should just dive right in. As I said, there are six items. So for this first one, which is the community development update, for that Director Horn, I'll kick it over to you as soon as you are ready.
I'm ready, Mayor. Thank you.
All right.
I'm sorry, are you gonna share the screen with me or?
You can just, so it's set up for you if you just go into the menu and grab the screen. You see in the menu.
It's saying I can't screen share while the other participant is sharing.
Let me check the settings. I'll stop sharing and let me know if it works then. It should, it should have been able to, but regardless.
I'm not, I'm not as tech savvy as you, admittedly.
No, just let me know if you got it.
Does that work?
Yes, it does.
Do you guys see it?
Yeah.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and I apologize for having my screen off, but I'm trying to do a lot of different things here and I don't want to, you guys to see me scrambling. So thank you for the opportunity to present for you tonight. This is a community development update. It's one of several we've done in the past. We'll just dive right in. For the purpose of the new council members, we will do a brief history. Then we'll go into some of the accomplishments over the past several years. Some of the accomplishments we had in 2020, and then we'll talk about our goals moving into the next year or two. We are aware that there were some goals provided through the city council, through the city manager's office. This is a more higher level view of those items. We do have bullet point discussion items for the council. Should there be any interest, your more than, staff would be more than willing to meet with you on those and talk to you about those individuals. So that said, let's start with the presentation. I'll, I do, I am cognizant of the amount of items, so I will go as quickly as I can. And then there'll be time at the end for conversation and questions. I apologize, it's not letting me. There we go. Um, this community development division, which is now a division of Public Works, is a full-service community development department, really. Everything from plan reviews to permit processing, code enforcement, planning and zoning, rental, business licenses. Any, any operation that most community development departments do is done here in Rolling Meadows. So for those of you who are here last year, you probably know the answer to this, but when we ask what is a community development's core purpose, it is to ensure compliance with codes that are adopted by the city council. That is the main responsibility of this division. The main reasons that a community, a quality community development department is important are the four reasons listed, public health, safety and welfare. That protects any future homeowner, business owner, visitor to one of our stores or restaurants to make sure that the construction involved with that building is, is done to the standards established by the community. It protects residents from zoning mismatches, so you don't have a tavern right next door to a church. It maintains ISO ratings for residents who, which, which helps them in their homeowners insurance. And then it preserves property values that help both commercial and residential properties, which ultimately help residents. I got the brief history. Prior to 2017, or May of 2017, the community development department was a department on its own. It had a full-time director, but it was a broken department. There was poor communication, really stagnant leadership, real lack of focus in customer service. It just wasn't living up to the standards that it had established years ago. In May 22nd, on May 22nd, the, the division, the community development department became a division of Public Works. After the kind of an abrupt retirement by the director, there was a need to refine the posture and attitude of the department. And I believe that Public Works had a reputation for getting things done, so that's why it was given to us. And I will probably always remember this statement in my career, to give you an example of the posture of the, of the staff at that time. We had talked about revising some of the permit applications to make it easier for applicants. And the comment I got was a very snarky, why do we have to make things easier for them? So that's what we were dealing with, with when we took over the department. Prior to the resignation, retirement of the previous director, a business survey results were received that had been asked for by the then city council. Where almost 1,000 surveys were sent out to businesses. Of those 1,000 surveys, there was a 15% response rate. And, and again, this is one of those items where, where if you looked at the numbers, it looks bad, but it doesn't look awful. But then when you read the comments that were posted, you understand the rest of the story. And that story is one that, you know, no, no one would be proud of, real bad comments about the inspectors being, you know, unhelpful, arrogant, you know, a fear that there was retaliation being pursued for contractors who, who were not cooperative and, and all sorts of things. So so this is what we were dealing with. Other issues that were identified at that time, I just am pointing them out here just real quickly. There was obviously a long list that had been presented to council in the past. But we had a lot of pending retirements. There was no leadership at all. The department had very low morale. Everybody was doing their own thing. There was no cooperation between kind of areas of expertise. The applications and forms were all completely outdated. Our processes were, were outdated as well. And as I talked about, or will talk about, our fee schedule, building and zoning codes were all. Sorry if I was muted there. So when we talk about the staff changes, I, I've, since I've been here six years and I know that at least in Public Works, there has not been one single day where we have been fully staffed. And I think I did a look and I think there was maybe four months where the community development division had a full staff. That's a significant impact on an operation when you're constantly turning people over. So this is what the department went through over the last three years. We had three retirements, one reassignment to a new position. We had two part-time clerical positions resign because the, it was just too stressful of a job. And while all that was happening, we were in the process of negotiating ASME union contracts. So staffing changes are, are not insignificant to how they affected department. Over the last few years, we also had changes in leadership. So when the department was first given to community development, I served, myself and the previous director served as kind of part-time supervision for the department. But in July of 2018, as part of our succession planning process, we identified a superintendent that we felt would work well in that position. He was assigned in July of 2018. In May of 2019, the Director of Public Works retired. I was assigned to Director in 2019, June, and we were lucky enough to be able to hire Joellen Charlton as the Assistant Director of Public Works. And she brought with her 30-plus years of community development experience. So we were lucky to get her on board. So, you know, in those three years, we accomplished a lot. And it was great to see in our presentation last year, February, a lot of, of feedback from the council that made us feel as a staff that we were on the right track and we were doing the things that the council wanted to see us do and, and pursuing the things that the council wanted pursued. So just quickly, accomplishments prior to 2020. You know, the big one for me was the change in our customer service focus. The customer service, I won't even read all this stuff there. It just was horrendous. I don't mind saying it, because I'm, I don't mind saying it because I'm so proud of the, the folks that are there now and how they've turned the corner and changed that entire culture. When I took over on a part-time basis, I was getting three to five complaints a week about the performance and treatment of inspectors to homeowners or contractors. That is not an exaggeration at all. That is a truth. And since 2019, I think I've received one complaint about an inspector. And it was a misunderstanding more than a complaint. So it was easily resolved. I will say, as a kudos to our staff, I just don't get complaints right now. I do get questions about status of things. That's normal and typical. I would expect those. But I just do not receive complaints. And that's a great thing for a director or anyone in a leadership position. One of the big things we did do that wasn't done prior to Public Works is we've incorporated the use of third-party consultants. I truly believe what happened is the community development department used to be made up of 12 or 13 employees prior to the recession of 2009. And as a result of that situation, for, you know, many communities across the country, that staff was reduced as a result. And we didn't change our expectations. So we were, been trying to maintain the same level of work with three to four less people. And you just can't do it. And as a result, I think our, our employees got very short and, and just based on the stress level. So we did that, which has helped. We have consistent messaging to our staff about the importance of customer service. We regularly recognize excellent customer service at our all-staff meetings. We have decentralized job duties, which helps all the employees kind of take a mutual accountability when something falls through the cracks. And we changed the focus to our code enforcement. And really, any kind of violation, whether it be building code or otherwise, that our first priority is to enable compliance. That's job number one. If, if job number one doesn't work after three attempts, then we adjudicate and fine as necessary and as required by the city. Again, these are repeats, comprehensive plan, application form updates. That will be ongoing. I think community development has like 10,000 forms that have to be updated. So we'll be working on those for a long time. We did stop initially the over-the-counter and express permits that were provided in the past. We shortly thereafter, maybe end of 2018, early 2019, we brought all of those back. We refined them. We made them easier to use. What we are doing at this time is we don't advertise specifically when express permits will be ready. We just as a department have indicated that those go along a different track of processing. And, and the, the staff is aware that those are the high priority projects. So we try and get them out as soon as possible. But one of the great things that we're going to be able to use the ERP system for is to be able to start to track how long they generally take. So we can start to advertise that and not continuously miss the mark on people. I don't want to tell people we'll have them done in three days. And for some reason, it took five that week, you know what I mean? So, but we are, we have been using those for over a year and they've worked out perfectly. So as you know, we, we did do an entire zoning ordinance update, entire fee schedule update for the new aldermen in the room, or those that don't recall, our fee schedule. As an example, we showed the council had 44 different fees for an electric permit. We reduced that down to three. So, and we did that across the board. So that is paying dividends, right? That was paying dividends right away for our staff and the applicants. Again, outsourcing of plan reviews, inspections, consolidated permit types. If you would have looked at the city's website in 2017, the number of permit applications was like 50. And we've reduced it down to like, I think, under 10 different permit applications, just to try and make it easier for applicants to navigate. We streamlined several operations. I've only listed a few here, but this was something that was done very early on. Quite honestly, as, as a way to survive having to sign thousands of pieces of paper. All these different types of licenses and special permits used to go to the director's desk and sit there till she signed them. We empowered our staff to do that themselves. So it, those kind of licenses, special events permits, temporary sign permits, other kind of permits that are easily issued, those get issued directly by the staff, which is, which has helped immensely in our process. Couple of big changes is the institute, institution of official permits and traditional occupancies. For obvious reasons, in the past, permits and occupancies were not issued until they were 100% perfect. And so you can imagine how many times applicants would go back and forth trying to get their plans absolutely perfect. So one of the other things that we hadn't mentioned in the past is the development of engineering standards. We deal with that a lot by construction contractors who want to understand how, what is required for our infrastructure. Prior to 2018, we had no engineering standards for contractors to look at. This was just the last item I put in because some of these things we changed are probably some of the things I take the most pride in because to me, they're the hardest things to change. And, and lead to the best changes which are yet to come. And obviously, we're still in the process of securing a leadership position. But our leadership is dramatically improved with the turnover of 66, a little over 66% of the department. We have new attitudes, fresh perspectives in the department. Our customer, our focus is entirely customer, to help customers. We have a more balanced workload through the use of consultants. We have people working together that normally hadn't in the past. And quite honestly, at least over the last couple of years, the support from the mayor and the city council is huge for relaying to the staff that we're doing the right thing. When the staff feels supported by the leadership, it's very easy to get them on board to what we're trying to accomplish. Some of the positive results from those efforts include the items listed here, everything from, you know, one of the big things I've noticed, if you come into the community development ever, division, residents come to the front counter and feel like they're there to get help. And there was a time when it felt like they were there to get into an argument. And I don't feel that that's there anymore. And I really appreciate, again, that, that goes to staff and, and their willingness to take on this new approach and, and be helpful first. And, and I appreciate that. It's a very positive work environment right now. And, and as a result, we get almost no complaints. You know, I can't speak to all the elected officials, but the complaints that come into myself or Joellen's phone is almost nothing. Again, their phone calls for clarification or for status or for things like that, but it's never a complaint, which is, I think it's a testament to what we're doing. Yeah. So and again, the last item, our efforts related to the implementation of the ERP is gonna be critical to our future success. And I think we'll really hit on a lot of the, the things that are very important to the city council. So this is my kind of funny slide of the, kind of funny and sad, I guess, of the, of the night. You know, 2020 started, we had a new, I was a new director. We had Joellen on board as a new assistant. All the staffing seemed to be stabilized. We were starting to focus on operational improvements as opposed to organizational improvements. We had enter gov and zoning code changes were initiated and, and our folks were, were heading, heading in the right direction there. And we had just provided our presentation to the city council at the end of February and felt like at that meeting, we were on track with what, what you folks wanted us to do. And we all thought the future was pretty bright. There's my big funny picture of the day, sorry. And then guess what happened a month later? So I just put in a couple of slides about the pandemic. Not because I want to focus on it a lot, because the reality is community development and Public Works were identified as essential services. We're very grateful that we worked the entire year. We understood the need and our folks did an outstanding job. The one thing I just need to relay, and I don't even know how to verbalize it. I tried to think of the right thing to say, but the impact of the pandemic was, is so hard to describe, but it is so significant. I can't remember for at least the first several months, you couldn't have a conversation without spending at least an equal amount of time on how the pandemic was going to affect whatever you were talking about. So everything had to be looked at through a magnifying glass. So, and like I said, so our whole year got thrown upside down as a result of that, as, as did for a lot of people, but I felt would be irresponsible if I didn't at least acknowledge it. That said, I thought 2020 was a great year for what we accomplished. Despite all the, the things that came along with the pandemic, our staff developed and implemented a no-contact permit process, which allowed permits to be processed without interaction with the public, which I still am amazed at, at how well they made that work. We consolidated our state licensing plumbing, plan review and inspection services, which ultimately improved our customer service and reduced our operational costs at the same time. We developed a resident permit consultation program. We helped out city council initiatives with temporary sign regulations, outdoor dining regulations, video gaming, business licensing. We, I don't know whether comprehensive zoning, oh, that comprehensive zoning code map was updated. We completed the lot consolidation and, and the planning and zoning process for the Owl property. We had several discussions on holiday lighting. We updated the fee schedule. You know, the, the accomplishments through 2020, I'm very proud of. We, we did a lot in 2020. And, and not only did we do a lot in 2020, there wasn't a, as big a drop-off as I thought there might be from 2019 to 2020. The bigger drop-off unfortunately was the valuation of construction. The valuation of construction was off by about, I think, almost $20 million. But that's because most of the projects were not commercial. And, but when you look at the numbers, our permit fees were only down $100,000. Our, our permits in number were only down 11%. Our inspections in number were only down 14%, but our complaints were up 5%. So as far as what we were normally used to, our regular day-to-day activities did not change dramatically enough to account for the additional impacts of the COVID protocols, et cetera. So just, you know, moving forward into 2021 and 2022, here's a snapshot of what our, our highest priority goals are. Comprehensive building code update, obviously getting someone in that leadership position is critical. But, but our number one focus right now is the ERP. I just have to say a few minutes to talk about how amazing your employee Elizabeth Payne has been. The way the ERP works is, is it's customizable, fully customizable. That's the way the city chose to purchase it several years ago. And the way it normally works is two or three people of prominence, either by leadership position or their use of the software, sit in a room for three to four days a week, for multiple weeks a year, and just sit there and answer questions for a guy who is in, at the other end of the table, making all the In at the other end of the table, making all the changes for us. Well. Elizabeth. Decided that that was a waste of time. So she decided to start. Building the software herself. So she has check in meetings with Jo Ellen Charlton and the undergov folks. But she is creating all that. The basically the program from scratch, and I don't know if we have another person on staff who I could count on to do something like that. So. Definitely want to recognize her for those efforts. We want to codify our occupancy application process. Obviously, we have some. Younger but greener inspectors, so we're going to try and get them some training because obviously there was no training last year. We're going to look at our inspection scheduling procedures. Our comprehensive fine schedule. And lastly, the reviewer of our subdivision regulations. To try and get those up to speed like our zoning code and comprehensive plan. Excuse me, just a couple more slides. The enterprise resource planning is critical. I just want to read through a couple of reasons why. You know, once we get this up and running, applicants will be able to go online and look at their permit and plan review status live. Up to date on their own. There will be automated distribution of plans to plan reviewers. Automated generating of license applications and renewals. So for example, if you're a rental owner. You'll be able to, I might be mistaken, but they will send you an email. You'll go to the website. Be able to pay your rental fee and as long as there's no violations. You'll get a auto response with your with your certificate there showing that it's been renewed. Jo Ellen just. Added this slide here, this this item. She said any report you want. Really, it gives us complete customizable reporting. We can look at. Almost any specific thing that can get tracked, we can report on it. I'm excited about the ability to provide mobility and connectivity to our inspectors. They'll be able to be in the field. Provide live updates on inspection results. They'll be able to track whether someone's in violation somewhere else. Before they approve a inspection. It just it just does so many different things for the department. And we're really excited to hopefully get that up and running by the end of this year, which will give our staff a few months to get comfortable with the software before twenty twenty two construction season. As as anything. As with any department, we all have our challenges. Staffing changes will continue to be a challenge for this department. Again, while I I left it in there. Primarily for the benefit of new aldermen. I would like to thank you on behalf of our entire staff, the all the elected officials. The sidestepping, I'm using my finger quotes that had happened in the past. Is not happening anymore, and that's a testament to your guys' support. So we do appreciate that. Enterprise resource program, that will be a challenge until we get everybody up and running on that. And get getting really the community aware of what that is. We will. Do presentations on the ERP similar to how. Finance Director Gallagher did the utility billing. We'll start updating people in the fall that that will be coming. A big thing I want to make sure we don't do. Because I feel like we are making great strides as I don't want to overreact to the vocal minority. We have been handing out surveys for two and a half years. We estimate that we've submitted, we've sent out seven hundred and fifty surveys. We've received twenty five back. And of those twenty five, one has been negative. And again, I'm not saying we don't have improvements to make, but. As I, as we indicated in the slide. You know, nobody calls the finance department to tell them what a good job they're doing when they give them a water bill. And nobody thanks the policeman for giving them a speeding ticket. So. It's just one of the inherent things we we deal with in community development. Making sure people's work is compliant with the standards we establish as a community. Is sometimes seen as a as a roadblock and and our goal is to to make that. More as a of a helpful cooperative and collaborative effort. So. That said, if if you don't know how to solve a problem, please call us. That's what we're here for. We want to take that off your plate. And which leads me into this. How can you help us? Continue to work with us and collaborate with us. I think we all get better when we work together. Anyone, any elected official whoever has an interest in any of the operations for public works, we're happy to set up. Kind of a job shadowing or or walk you through our operation. I I heard from our new alderman this evening. I'll be setting something up with her in the near future. Big thing is to question people who who are who are. Contacting you because of their frustration with our department. Please ask them if they've contacted staff. Please ask who they talked to. What the concern was, the more information you get, the better. But please continue to send those our way. We like getting those. We like solving problems for you. A, it takes a headache off your plate. And B, I get to show you guys that we know what we're doing. So please send those our way. Again. This is the information for Jo Ellen and myself. I know you guys all have us on your speed dials already, but. This is just. Just a reminder of the community development phone number. And. The last slide I have. Even though it just says questions. You know, when I was preparing this presentation. I've been in. I've been in public service for thirty years, almost thirty one. And of that time, twenty one years has been spent in community development operations. And I do get a little choked up when I talk about. Our department because I know they work really hard and I know they're dedicated. To what we're trying to accomplish. And. You know, especially some of the folks who have been around a while. Could have very easily dug their heels in and and made everything we're doing difficult. And they haven't. And I just want to make sure everyone understands that. All the things that this department, this division, community development. Accomplished over the last three years, to me would have been impressive for a department that had nothing to deal with. Just a regular department, no retirements, no anything. When we look back at what this department went through. It went through multiple retirements. Two retirements of their their leadership with no notice. The COVID situation. You know. Constant, a regular. I don't know what you want to call oversight by myself and Jo Ellen. And and they have they have stuck their chest out, held their chin up high. And and carried the torch for us. And and I wa- I know some of them are listening to this presentation. And I want them to know that. I do appreciate. Their willingness to try and get better every day. Because that's our, that's what we do in our department. We believe in that. And they have been an excellent representation of getting better every day. So I appreciate. Their efforts. So with that, I will end my presentation and Jo Ellen and Elizabeth. Are available for questions and comments at this time.
Thank you, Director Horn, for providing the update on on that department specifically. At this time, if there are any questions or comments from council members, feel free to put the hand up and we'll call in in order. Any questions, comments? Alderman Sanoyka?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Director Horn, for that very informative presentation on community development. There was a slide that you had earlier that was discussing the trends comparing two thousand nineteen and twenty twenty. Can you go back to that slide for a second?
Absolutely.
This is the one. Thank you.
Is that it?
This is it. Thank you. So in the upper right hand corner where we have the difference between construction valuation. You were surprised at the difference in construction valuation between these two years. Can can you provide? More clarification on what construction value means in this context and then why you were surprised by that difference?
I I actually, I I'm sorry if I misspoke. My surprise was that the differences for the permit fees and the number of permits and inspections. Wasn't more different. The valuation was the. The number that I felt was indicative of what we would expect because. The reality is most of the commercial construction. Stopped. I mean, there was just not commercial construction. So the valuation is important because that provides us. A, that's what our building permit fees are driven off of. And B, that's an indication of the the amount of work that's occurring in in the city. So. I, yeah, I mean, it was almost twenty million dollars, I think, less. So I did. Believe that the valuation would be less. I just thought the permit fees and the permits, et cetera. Would be equally as 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 different from year to year, but it really wasn't. So that's that's what I meant.
I think I understand. And and when referring to the valuation or the construction value, is that referring to? Is that is that a city engineer function? I guess I'm confused as to as to what that function is for the for the department.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So every permit that gets issued has to give us the. Valuation is a fancy way of saying total cost of construction. So so the total cost of construction in the city in twenty nineteen was about fifty seven million dollars. Whereas in. Twenty twenty, it was about thirty eight million dollars. So it it. The the total. The higher cost construction projects were not as prominent in twenty twenty as they were in twenty nineteen. Does that follow?
Yeah.
You follow that?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
That was it for the clarification on on these specifics. So thank you for going into the leads with me.
No problem.
Yeah, I I don't have any further questions at this time.
All right, thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. Alderman Budmats, I see your hand is up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Rob, earlier in the presentation, I heard you say that I, correct me if I'm wrong, that you had, there was seven hundred and fifty. Surveys sent out?
Yes.
Okay.
That's an approximate number.
Okay, I'm looking at the number of permits and it looks like there were about two thousand permits issued. So. Help me understand, why do we not have two thousand? Survey sent out? What what is there? Are we only doing that for certain kinds of permits or or when do surveys go out?
Yeah, so I I agree, Nick, or excuse me, Alderman Budmats. Sorry. Yeah, that was that was for, quite honestly, a miscommunication. We recently only probably. Geez, I wanted to say six months ago, but it's already May. So maybe. Mid twenty twenty or end of twenty twenty, we started handing them out to every single application regardless. So I I can't explain as to what ones we were and we're not doing it for. I think quite honestly, we started. Committing, started sending them out with every permit. And we weren't getting anything in return. So quite honestly, I think it just stopped getting done. So. That that's really the main reason. So that that has stopped. However, it goes out for every permit, no matter what. Doesn't matter if they're doing the smallest little sidewalk improvement up to the major commercial. Every single permit that leaves the office gets a survey.
Okay, and has the is the number of responses increased then in the same time period? Commensurate with the number of surveys being sent out?
It's a good question. I'm only answering no because I can see Elizabeth on my screen shaking her head no. So I think if we, if you wanted more details behind that, we'd be happy to get them for you.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that like it would be like, just like, it would just numerically follow that if you have. You know, twice as many surveys go out, you probably get twice as many responses.
I I think initially, Alderman Budmats, our our bigger concern was the plan review process. So we were asking applicants to fill them out before they left. And so I think that's why we're getting them more often. I think the big issue, quite honestly. Is that. People that are not specifically upset about something are unlikely to fill out a survey. And I I'm not any specialist in that area. I just think that's what it is. If I, you know, we rack our brains pretty regularly about. A way to get feedback from the community. I did put it on the slide and we have talked about it as a department. I want surveys out for almost everything we do. We do that with capital projects as well. I want to know. What residents would like to see us do differently. It doesn't mean that we're going to all of a sudden just drop everything and do them differently. But what it does do is start pointing out areas we should start keeping an eye on. So we are not afraid of surveys at all.
And then can I suggest that we also might, if we don't get a survey back from somebody. Especially after the inspection process is over, it might be worth sending one out again, only because. I think residents may be fearful of retribution and having. And having an inspection that doesn't go as well. And so I've had people say, I'm not going to complain. The last thing I need is a is an irritated inspector coming to my home or my business. And so and so however, we can do this to make this process anonymous. So that people can give us the feedback that we're looking for. Whatever we can do to make that as anonymous as possible and is, we might make it as. Forthcoming as possible too, so that people. I mean, I've literally, people said, I'm not getting, I'm not going to return that survey. It doesn't matter how irritated I am because the last thing I'm going to do is have an inspector come in here and write me up for everything. And I get that mindset. And but we have to, we have to be able to, we have to be able to fight that by. Doing it at the end of the process, after it's all over and it's all completed, so the people can say. Yeah, all in all, it wasn't too bad, or all in all, it was totally good, or all in all, it totally sucked. But one way or another, we need to get the honest feedback.
Yeah, and and I agree, Alderman Budmats. And that's why we started handing them out. When we do hand them out, we say submit them whenever you're comfortable submitting them. But. We are looking at the ability to use ERP for that. We do send. Send letters to applicants after their permits issued, reminding them of certain processes and procedures. That take place as part of the construction process. We certainly could put a line in that letter about asking that they please help us by. Filling out that survey when their project is over. So certainly we'll look into that that suggestion.
Great. Thank you very much, Director. I I yield my time.
Thank you, Alderman Budmats. Any other questions or comments on this subject from the council? Well, Director Horn, it doesn't look like there are any additional questions, comments, or concerns. So with that, I appreciate you providing the in depth. Information on this and hopefully we can receive more survey updates, which we can apply to the next set of. Reports and status updates with this department. And then with that point, I'm going to steal the screen back and then get moving on to the next. Subject, which is the Rolling Meadows Business Buzz website update. And I believe for this one. We are going to go ahead and have. Our business advocate, Martha Corner, provide this update. Is that correct, Martha?
It is. Can you hear me?
Yes, are you, are you ready? Do you need the screen by chance?
I'm just going to be speaking tonight. I'm going to keep it free for the busy agenda. So I just want to summarize and recap this this. Website effort called the Rolling Meadows Business Buzz. Anybody who hasn't done so, I encourage them to visit the website at. W W W dot R M business buzz dot org. This is a very innovative and unique website, and that is business centric for the city of Rolling Meadows businesses. It's owned and managed by the city, and it provides advertising and marketing to the businesses free of charge. I'm not personally aware of many of other communities that are doing this. So it is somewhat of a work in progress and we are kind of moving further into uncharted territory. But generally, the the businesses have been very happy about this effort. And October twenty twenty, in order to deal with, you know, the COVID's negative economic impacts, city staff followed. City council and economic development committee recommendations to quickly initiate efforts to provide advertising and marketing assistance and communication. Assistance free of charge to all Rolling Meadows businesses. assistance free of charge to all Rolling Meadows businesses. Um, logic, uh, dictated that we would do something to presumably low cost. And, uh, so we decided to go ahead and look for a good way to leverage social media. Um, we've reviewed proposals from a few firms and the lowest responsible bidder, also a Rolling Meadows, uh, business, Divine Design was selected. So for the past six months, we've been busy, uh, building content, um, streamlining processes and keeping, you know, um, the process efficient. Uh, this ongoing website marketing effort includes coupons, special offers, information on city and business events, employment opportunities and business features accolades, accolades. Again, to emphasize efforts to expand and improve the web- website are ongoing. On a weekly basis, approximately four hours of cumulative city staff time are spent on maintaining current website information and adding new content. I won't go into detail about the, the work effort that's in there in the report for you. Um, currently about 700, 740 licensed businesses are listed on the website directory section free of charge. It includes their website, uh, description of their business, et cetera. Fifty-one business representatives have provided additional materials for posting on the website. Thirty-five businesses have also provided special offers. Um, efforts to increase business participation are ongoing. Although we have had difficulty tracking the redemption rate for these coupons, it is notable that after the first six months, all but two of the advertising businesses for special offer, offers, uh, re-upped their coupons for the next six months through October 31st. Um, if you can see on the report, there's a wide variety of schools or businesses that have listed special offers, ranging from retail to dining to service providers, et cetera. Uh, we have a building list of act- active job opportunities. Uh, we include Daisy's Cafe, Dunkin' Donuts, Fratello's, Rosati's, and Touching Hearts at Home. Um, just recently, and we are posting it, uh, very soon, we have 32 new job listings from ATS Sortomat, ranging from technical professional positions to, um, uh, shop floor jobs. So I encourage you to look at the website within the next few days to see those, uh, very promising job, uh, opportunities. Um, again, you know, without going into detail, we have, uh, undergone a lot of efforts to build the platform and, you know, efforts are ongoing. In the future, we'll continue to collaborate with Rolling Meadows businesses. Uh, we will be providing publicity and support for businesses participating in the September 23rd, 2021 Business and Community Showcase, uh, scheduled for the Meridian. And we're gonna start including special features on new businesses. Um, and, and below that, you can see our marketing efforts. In closing, I just wanna say that we've built content and now going forward, we're gonna try to leverage social media at a very low cost and work on search engine optimization to, um, build the metrics, to further extend the reach of the Business Buzz website and by extension, the visibilities of the roll, the visibility of the Rolling Meadows businesses, again, free of charge. In closing, I'd like to say the Rolling Meadows Business Buzz website has launched a citywide initiative to shop, buy, and dine locally. By shopping, eating, drinking, playing, and utilizing local services within our city, we've worked toward making the city's local businesses be successful and vibrant. If anybody, anybody has any questions or suggestions, uh, we welcome them. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Martha, for providing the update on the Business Buzz website. Uh, does any member of the council have any questions, comments, concerns, uh, for our business advocate? Okay, uh, it looks like you're off the hook for any questions or comments on, on the Business Buzz website. So we appreciate you providing the update on where this is and where it's going. And, uh, with that, then we'll go ahead and move along. Oh, you know what? I see Alderman Besessi, you put your hand up. Do you wanna have a go at it?
Yeah, the only thing I wanted to say is, uh, wanted to thank Martha for, for the work she's doing and the progress that's happening with this whole site and everything. You know, keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Uh, thank you, Alderman Besessi, appreciate that. Uh, if there aren't any further, uh, comments on the subject, then we will move on to the third point, which is the new restaurant incentive. And for this, I'm gonna defer to Manager Crumstock. Uh, Barry, do you need the, uh, monitor for anything on this?
No, for the next two, you do not need, uh, the monitor. This is specifically the ordinance, the draft ordinance that's in front of you. So thank you, Mayor and City Council. Before you was a draft ordinance that was recommended by the Economic Development Committee. The committee has worked on this for a few months. Um, the first item that we're talking about is the new restaurant incentive. This is really based on a one that we had in the past that by policy was only for a few years. We did have a few restaurants that utilized, it came into the municipality and continue working on some of this. This tool is based on that old incentive. However, it does have new, um, parts of it. When you look at the ordinance per se, there's a $5,000 split in equal amounts for purchasing and opening. It's how it's actually done, um, with some of the other pieces. It's also helping with the business to actually do their build out. The other part is that when you look at how the reimbursement or rebate is actually given to each of the restaurants, it's actually a year after the fact. So with the budget, what we do is we would be taking that food and beverage one year and then we're remitting it the next year. So it's not in the same calendar year. However, um, there's two parts of this and this is where, um, you have to be very specific. If you're on Kirchhoff Road and the ordinance specifies where that corridor is, or if you're not, there's two different kinds of payments. This new ordinance, uh, different from the old policy, was specific, now it is 60, 40, 20, or 40, 20, 10. Um, this third year is new to the program. And again, it all is tracked by the food and beverage that is actually put in there in good standing. Another new part of this ordinance is the facade and interior incentive. This is up to $10,000. Obviously, staff would maintain and watch some of the, uh, permits. One thing that the Economic Development Committee wanted to make sure is that if they're getting any incentive from the shopping center to do a build out or something else, we're not supplementing them so they're making, um, a profit on this kind of incentive. We are just helping them with their build out, with their production, with their longevity as a restaurant overall. The other part that I do wanna mention, um, and again, this is more into the whereas's. This now is a five-year program for the city of Rolling Meadows. Would start when it's actually passed if the, uh, city council does approve the recommendation from the Economic Development Committee. The other part is it gives a little more leeway for the manager to determine, um, if there's a business that's in the spirit of this. And what I mean by that is specifically, they were talking about, um, a restaurant that has three locations or less. However, when you look at Burrito Porata, who's actually moved in there, there are 10 different locations, but that's really a homegrown restaurant in Rolling Meadows slash the state of Illinois. So it gives the flexibility for any manager to look with staff to say, hey, this is really an Illinois startup, continue going on and moving out. It also allows for some additional, um, if you wanna look at it, who's a franchisee, who's not. Specifically, the Economic Development Committee did not want this going to the corporates. Um, they wanted it specifically for the manpas or people starting up, or some of those franchisees coming in and filling some of the vacancies throughout the, uh, city of Rolling Meadows. The other part, and this is section four, and this was completely new and this came out during the last month of discussion, is that they wanted to give this incentive, this new incentive for a closed business and backfilling a closed restaurant. Um, you know, you could look at Aglectic or you could look at some of the other places that have been closed, but it's still set up as a restaurant. And again, has it been done for 12 months? Then the committee decided with the recommendation for this draft ordinance, specifically that it would give them some kind of flexibility that staff would allow them to be part of this. So again, they might not need the $10,000 or the $5,000, but hopefully they would be utilizing the three years of rebating some additional food and beverage. The other part that we do wanna reiterate is again, this isn't for, uh, discussion, obviously, but we hope, and again, that was the recommendation from the Economic Development Committee, that this will lead to a positive straw vote for re-establishing a policy with a new incentive for restaurants. With that, that's my quick summary, trying to keep things moving along.
Uh, thank you, Manager Crumstock. Before I, I open the floor up for any members of the, the council in general, is there any information or feedback that the two liaisons from the council want to, want to incorporate? Or if Manager Crumstock, uh, captured it in its essence, then that's fine. But if not, I'll allow these two to go. So first, Alderman O'Brien, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um, Manager Crumstock really summed it up to some of the notes I captured here is one of the questions we've gotten just since EDC talked about is, well, what are we envisioning is a need? And we really did look at that. I think there's 13 vacancies within the Kirchhoff corridor. So just some ideas that we're throwing up that we also worked with, uh, business advocate Martha on as well. There was an idea of a bakery, a pet store, a dry cleaners, a doctor's office. Regrettably, the, the current eye doctor that was here passed away, I learned, within the last six or nine months. So those were just some of the ideas, the, the big pie in the sky idea, if we could work, is more of an entertainment. A lot of people missed that, that draw. And so that's kinda where the discussion started, obviously having local small business owners on the EDC. Really, the question we discussed was what would bring you to the Rolling Meadows area? A lot of it is, we talked about beforehand in the previous, uh, recaps that Alderman Venesiano and I gave was, a lot of it's out of our control, regrettably. It's rent controlled by the landlord and things like that, where some of that's cost prohibitive. But these four items that Manager Crumstock walked through, that's, was kind of the consensus from, actually, I shouldn't say kind of, that was full consensus from the Economic Development Committee of things that were within the city's control that we could help here or there, that was not a huge financial impact because we do know that obviously rent landlord, and that's a big factor in it, which that might be phase, I would say, I see Martha at the way back corner, so she can't throw anything at me. That might be like phase three or four of this. Can we work with landlords on dropping the rates if they potentially, based on the COVID pandemic and obviously just the commercial real estate? So this is probably step one A. Um, and so it was just the ideas we talked about in terms of what the, the ideas were that could be needed there. And then obviously I'll defer to Alderman Venesiano if I, if I missed anything.
Uh, thank you for sharing some more, uh, of the periphery in the conversation that you have during the EDC meetings on this subject. Uh, I don't see Alderman Venesiano's hand up, so I'm assuming that you captured the, the content sufficiently enough. But I do see, um, well, actually, I do see it up now. So Alderman Venesiano, I'll allow you to jump in if there's anything else related to EDC on that. And then following you will be Alderman Senoika.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, um, Manager Crumstock and Alderman O'Brien, um, pretty much summed it up, um, with the intention that the focus for this really was to help, um, the small businesses, the mom and pop, um, the, um, we really wanted emphasis, we are not looking to help, not that we don't wanna help, but we really did not want to, um, extend these incentives to corporate, to, you know, multiple franchisees. Um, I mean, that was really what our focus was. Um, and so the one thing that we did kinda go back and forth a lot about the discussion was, um, the facade and interior work, um, money and how that would be distributed, um, whether it would be the 10,000 upfront or 5,000 in that breakdown. Um, and we did have a lot of discussion on that and this was the summary, um, what you see before you is, is kinda, kind of a happy medium is what we kind of, um, thought, that if the, the new business were able to get a little bit upfront, you know, at their, their, um, certificate of occupancy, then that would help them, you know, with that first possible month of business where we know, um, income can be a little rough. And then obviously, you know, a year later, um, once they've been established and hopefully open for that year, um, they would get that additional 5,000 if they qualified for the entire $10,000. Um, and that's not to say that every business would qualify for that entire $10,000. Um, so, so I just wanna reassure council that the intention is not to give every single business $10,000. Um, and so I think we, we can answer any other questions you guys might have.
Thank you, definitely appreciate that. Um, moving on for questions or comments, we do have Alderman Senoika, your, your hand was up and you have the, the floor now.
Okay, sorry, I, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so, Mr. Mayor, I, I have three items. I will start going through one, two, and three. Um, but if other hands go up, I'll, I'll make sure that I make time and we can come back to them. Uh, so the, the first item I wanted to ask our members of the Economic Development Committee if, um, in these discussions, if there was any discussion on a proposed tax penalty for owners who are having prohibitive, uh, rental costs or leasing costs that are preventing vendors and businesses from coming into the city in the first place?
If, if there's a, an answer from one of the liaison, just go ahead, Alderman O'Brien.
Sorry, I, I don't know what emoji came up. I was trying to get some attention and wanted to ask if I, I should respond to that, is we, we had very, very early discussion around that, Alderman Senoika, is that we thought that was gonna be too big to bite off, to, to be completely transparent, to try and get done in the short, near-term future. So, um, there was talk about that, but that, uh, is probably a, a later phase. But we have talked with Martha and, uh, Director Gallagher and Manager Crumstock at EDC about what we could leverage potentially with landlord owners and property owners. And even some of the small business owners that sit on EDC have slowly started to use their networks to go ahead and start talking with landlords about ideas. So there's been no other official discussion other than that's a problem and something we wanna look forward to at this time.
Alderman O'Brien, was, was there any, um, were there any roadblock, like initial preliminary roadblocks to that? Were, that is, that is kind of, uh, you know, painting the trepidations of the committee to even begin to, to enter that discussion?
I think it was primarily just in terms of a timing thing, is that we could discuss that at the June meeting. The only initial thing was, is that it is so controlled right now. I've heard anywhere from $30 per square foot up to $90 per square foot. So I mean, we even got that detailed and had a sample provided to us of what it would cost to build out the average. I think it was the old Blockbuster was the example that was provided, um, here on Kirchhoff. So we've gone, there was no major roadblocks other than how we wanted to ask staff to, to wreck their time and focus for, we could get the low hanging fruit is where we saw it.
Okay. Um, if, if there is time to, to approach that, or to, to begin to have those discussions at your June meeting, I, I would be very interested, um, in any results that come from those discussions. The, the second item that I had, uh, would like clarification on is the emphasis on the Kirchhoff Road corridor as opposed to, um, Gulf Road, Algonquin, um, and, uh, Inflam Grove.
Sure, I can answer that. So the intention was, um, even in council, we've said, you know, that Kirchhoff Road is our downtown area. And so we really wanted to focus on the fact that we have, as of right now, roughly 13 vacancies on the Kirchhoff for that, that corridor from Rawling to New Wilkie Road. Um, and so if we focused our attention on the larger incentive in filling up those, that corridor, then we could see how this incentive works and possibly extending it, um, for the larger incentives to Algonquin Road, um, you know, Gulf Road, to the, to the other areas. But we still wanted to offer some kind of incentive, you know, among the entire community. Um, but we really wanted to focus our attention to filling that corridor and making our downtown area, um, filled and making it a downtown area. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, Alderman Venesiano, do, do we have, um, do we have, so you mentioned that you wanted to have kind of a sample set to see how successful this policy is for Kirchhoff to see if those increases and rebates could then be, um, administered to other commercial corridors in the city? Did, did I catch that?
So they're gonna, there, this incentive is offered for the entire community. Okay, but the corridor from Rawling to New Wilkie is at that higher percentage rate, the 60, 40, 20. Um, so the rest of the community, um, is at that, is at the lower percentages? Does that make sense?
It does, and, and, and I guess, and my, what I would want clarification on is, is if, is that just a priority from like a city planning standpoint to say, this is the corridor that we're going to, that we wanna emphasize and fill?
Yes.
It's not, it's not based off of, that we know that it's going to require this, this additional rebate in order to be successful based off of past years when this policy was in place?
No, it was simply that, um, it's, it's the focus of our attention. We wanted to fill the downtown area, make it a focus, a downtown area, um, very much like we were, um, kinda going off of the downtown Arlington Heights, the downtown Palatine. Those were kind of our examples. Um, and so we thought that if we had a higher And so we thought that if we had a higher incentive to fill that corridor compared to maybe Algonquin Road, that we would have a better likelihood of filling those 13-plus vacancies at a higher rate than the other spaces around town.
Thank you. And I understand that this is a policy that had been in place in the past, either to Alderman Venesiano or Alderman O'Brien or city staff. Do we have any data as to the success or application of this policy in the past?
So I can answer that. And what I can tell you is that each of the restaurants that participated are still in business. Obviously, they're doing well. And obviously, what I can tell you is it did get certain people to look at Rolling Meadows again. There's two of them in the downtown, the others were throughout the community. So it's just another tool in the toolbox when we have people come in. It's something that makes us a little different from other municipalities. And again, it's not a lot of money. The highest payout that we had was a little over $9,000. And that was for one of the Kirchhoff Road locations. But again, every little bit helped, it's just tracking and making sure how we do that. But again, if you're in good standing, and we try keeping them in good standing, obviously with finance, and obviously making sure what we're dealing with it. But it is a tool that was utilized and it was beneficial. And all those restaurants that did participate are still in business.
Thank you, Manager Crumstock. And do we know if, do we know then if there was any significant difference between those that came to look at Rolling Meadows and decided, you know, we want it to be in a different corridor, but this rebate is not significant enough for us to make that investment? Or any type of indication as to why this discrepancy would exist throughout the different commercial zones?
So the answer is that when any kind of restaurant or retailer or anybody is looking for, they're looking for their traffic counts. So they want to be on that Algonquin, New Wilkie slash Gulf Road corridor. And that's why we have so many different sections that are out there. But they do look for the traffic counts. And this is a way to help Kirchhoff Road corridor to have people take a second look at that. But a lot of these franchisees, a lot of the corporates, that's what they're looking for, their overall traffic counts. And to help Kirchhoff Road, and that's what some of them did look at specifically, what can you do? Now, obviously, this policy's been not around, but there are a few others that have opened since. But at the same point in time, it is a tool for anybody on staff to actually utilize, to actually hopefully bring them into the city, but also maybe take another look where the traffic count might not be exactly the same.
It looks like Alderman O'Brien also had something to add to that.
Thank you, Alderman. Also, I just want, I know you people probably can't see it on the screen here, but it was in the Economic Development Committee packet that's available on the website. As part of our prep for Business Advocate Corner pulled together, it's a listing of 12 area suburban locations near us and what their incentives are, because we asked that same question, how would this compare? Like, why would this give us a leg up over Hoffman Estates or Schaumburg? And it was actually very educational from my perspective. Only four nearby, Displanes, Mount Prospect, Niles, and Wheeling have something similar to this. One is only for restaurants, Wheeling has one for restaurants. The other ones, which Manager Crumstock will get to next, it's the overall business versus just being restaurant specific. And that none of them really look to have the incentives that we do. Some are close in terms of the facade build out or helping with like signage and things like that. But we did, we do have the details available too on that too, from 12 other suburban locations that had a program like this, but only four were considered close neighbors.
Thank you for that additional information, Alderman O'Brien. And that leads me then to another question, which is how this policy then will be disseminated to the business community in the same way that you were able to access those policies?
Do you want me to take that one, Mr. Mayor? Oh, I was gonna say, that is actually, I didn't speak to that, but that's kind of our next step, Alderman Sanoyka, is if it gets support at the council, is manager or Martha Corner was going to develop kind of like a one-pager, kind of like a fact sheet, I'm going to call it a sales sheet, where it can list out these incentives. And then it really is, I'm going to call it buffet or cafeteria style, is that some might be interested in all three or four options. Some might only say, hey, I'm okay from the sales tax perspective, but I would like help on the facade and things like that. So that would be the next step. We didn't want staff to dedicate time to that if it didn't get approval from council. So that was one thing that we were going to ask on going forward for our summer meetings, is if it's supported, that we develop this kind of one-pager fact sheet on the incentives. I'm sure there's probably others that Manager Crumstock can talk to, but that's the one we specifically talked to. I don't know the details of what else Martha has in her business portfolio.
Prudent, thank you.
Never mind. But what we also do is we make sure that it's on our website. And when we deal with some of their brokers, we make sure that they know all the tools that are potentially available as they come in and talk to the city.
Thank you, Manager Crumstock. I know I said that I had three items and many items had been touched upon, but I'm approaching my final item. And this is, I think, a question for Attorney Wolf. The policy states that there are a list of qualifications for who would qualify for this particular incentive. And if they don't match that, that the city manager has discretion as to who receives this rebate and who does not. Does that language or discretion put any compliance risk for the city by not kind of stating that hard line for this particular incentive?
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. You know, the language is intended to allow for, I think the issue was accurately defining those restaurants or businesses that would qualify for the incentive. As Alderman Venesiano had stated, you know, the intent of this was to afford this opportunity to the mom and pop shops or, you know, not larger corporate entities or operations. So this language, I believe, is intended to allow the manager to properly evaluate whether they qualify that way. As you accurately pointed out, though, it's always better to, you know, even though manager discretion is allowed and appropriate, especially in a manager form of government, there may be some, I can work with the manager on establishing some clarity in the language so that, you know, his determination is really to meet the intent of the ordinance and those businesses that are appropriate, as opposed to completely making it discretionary on the manager. The manager doesn't want that anyway, because he doesn't want to be accused of like discriminatory application of this. So I can work with Manager Crumstock on, you know, clarification of that language so that, you know, there's some leeway in the application of it so it can meet the intent of, you know, the ordinance and the incentive that the Economic Development Committee wants to provide.
Thank you, Attorney Wolf. And I'm not sure if that requires a formal motion for you to look into that from the city and for the city council to support that. But I would be in support of a further review, only because I believe when we were going through our original gaming licenses and accessory licenses for certain restaurants, that it was a very broad policy that required over a year of revision. And if we're going to have a rebate or some sort of economic or financial benefit, I would want to make sure that there are, that the intent is followed and that the council is very consistent and in agreement with that intent that's being proposed tonight. With that, I have no further questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka, for addressing your question so concisely to get the feedback you were looking for. My apologies, I had to cut the video in an effort to improve my bandwidth. The audio was getting bad and I wanted to be able to hear more than I wanted to be seen on the video. So I'm sorry about that. But are there any other questions or comments from the remaining council members on this new restaurant incentive program? Alderman McHale?
Yeah, I think the only, the only thing I would say is, I think the plan looks good. But there's just, there's something sitting with me about the Kirchhoff Road versus everywhere else, if we're really trying to help mom and pop shops. I understand we don't want to give another McDonald's any incentives and stuff like that if they're going to go on Algonquin Road. But if there is a bakery or something like that, that did feel that their location would be more beneficial in a certain area of the city, I don't know if that would look as them being penalized. So that's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
Thank you for sharing that. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Venesiano, I'll ask for a hand to be raised on that. But did that similar style question or the essence of that question come up during your conversations with the EDC in terms of, you know, what happens if there's a small business that has an ideal location because it's suitable for their market or the demographics for their industry? And if they find it unfavorable, that they don't qualify for the same proportion as what the Kirchhoff Road corridor receives? Did any conversation occur on that? I'll start with Alderman O'Brien, because I see your hand was up first, and then Alderman Venesiano.
Sure, thanks, Alderman McHale and Mayor Gallagher for that. As yet, we did have discussion around that. And what we really did focus on, it was actually based on our lead here as the council. And that's what Alderman Venesiano brought in our liaison program. I don't want to speak for Alderman or Alderman Venesiano, but since we did talk about how we're making this the holiday light stretch now and all the activity we talked about and approving the longer-term plan of having the lights and the stoplights and the streetlights all. So that's really where this base came from. And that's also, I think, going to what Attorney Wolf said. That's why we did purposely kind of word some of the discretion in there at the manager perspective. Is my understanding is any of these would come back to us as the full council for approval. So we would be able to look at John Smith Bakery on Plum Grove and consider it for an exception basis. So that is part of the reason we worded it the way that it was, is that it would give Manager Crumstock some leniency as well as the council as well. So not a ton of detail on that, because EDC really did. And with the small business owners, I think three of the representatives are in the Kirchhoff corridor and one is not as well. And so that really followed our lead as the council saying how much we wanted to hype up the downtown area from the parades. And when we talked about the, I was gonna say the parade party, but the block party, that was really kind of what we used as our North Star as we discussed it. I don't know if I was missing the boat on that one, Alderman Venesiano, or if you felt the same way of kind of what our directional was.
Yeah, so I think, I think the EDC really did take their guidance kind of from a lot of input from the council that we want to build up Kirchhoff Road as our downtown area. And like I said, we were using the Arlington Heights and downtown Palatine as our kind of examples when we were trying to, you know, come up with examples. And also off of, and we did share with EDC our individual meetings with Director Horn and Assistant Director Charlton on what the downtown area, like the long-term comprehensive plan could look like. And so in like what Manager Crumstock had said, that small businesses coming in, one of the questions they asked for is, you know, the traffic, you know, the foot traffic, the driving traffic. And so we know that we're a pass-through on Kirchhoff Road, we know that. And so Algonquin Road, Gulf Road, that traffic, it kind of sells itself. And so we were trying to give an incentive for, a higher incentive, I should say, for Kirchhoff Road to really try to fill that corridor up. Because Algonquin Road and Gulf Road, in that aspect, kind of sells itself because of the higher traffic that's already there. And so that's kind of where we got that lead from and doing the difference.
Okay, appreciate the feedback and the insight to the broader conversations that the committee as a whole had on that subject. If there aren't any further questions or comments, then what I'll do is I'll go ahead and take the straw vote for this restaurant incentive program to move it forward. I believe that Attorney Wolf has heard loud and clear that she should take a once-over with Manager Crumstock to make sure that the verbiage, by the time it arrives to the dais of the council during a city council meeting, it will have the appropriate language necessary to make sure that it is compliant with our previous ordinances and codes and the language we've used there and to. And we'll go from there. So if there are no further questions, I'd like to see those in favor of moving this restaurant incentive program forward. Those in favor? And so I see Alderman Sanoyka, Visessi, McHale, O'Brien, Budmats, Venesiano, and Ray. You can lower your hands and it's unanimous, which is nice. And there is no need to take an opposition count, because there isn't any. So we'll go ahead and move that forward. And Manager Crumstock, while we still have you on the mic, we'll go ahead and go on with this new sales tax generator incentive program.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Obviously, this one's very based on the one that we just had the conversation. So hopefully, it's a little quicker conversation. You will see the restaurant incentive probably at the first meeting in June with the passage in the second meeting of June, hopefully. This new sales tax generator, as I said before, it's a recommendation from the Economic Development Committee. Once the committee started talking about restaurant incentives, then it sort of changed into what other kind of tool can staff utilize to make the city be a little bit different. That's when we talked about new sales tax and how do you deal with that? Part of that conversation also dealt with, how do you deal with the service industries? And unfortunately, part of the conversation with the Economic Development Committee was, well, there's nothing really to rebate or give back to a service group, but sales tax is a generator that we could actually utilize. And again, it's based on being a five-year program. We would take it in one year and then we would rebate it. This actually has a lower percentage of the rebate. And again, it has two different sections for the city of Rolling Meadows overall, and then the same corridor on Kirchhoff Road that we talked about. So 1510-5 and 2520-15 were the numbers that were actually utilized with it. It also does have the split amount for the purchase opening and also has the facade interior. It does not have really any discretion at that point in time, because Section 3 is specifically for any rent retail business that has no more than three locations in the state of Illinois. So this would be for someone who's really a man pa, really starting and generating a little bit different. Again, it's based on the other one, so I hope I don't have to do full detail. But all that the staff is looking for, again, on this one, would be a straw vote for this positive. We have had no history on this to give you if this will generate more sales tax. It's a little bit different when we brought in Walmart, which was a whole incentive program, how we dealt with that. This is specifically a recommendation from Economic Development Committee for a sales tax refund for a period of three years. And again, it has the percentages. I know that's much shorter, but seeing that it's based on the other one, I hope they understand where it goes in. And again, if you have any questions, please ask. But again, each of the aldermen who are liaison on it. This one did have its own generated conversations. And again, as I said before, service industries, and we do have one member on the Economic Development Committee, her business is a service business. At this point in time, she would not be generating anything. But you can also think about a hairstylist. If a hairstylist is actually going to be selling products and we do get a sales tax, they would be able to generate anything like that. But for a insurance firm or some kind of retirement planning or something that does not generate it, unfortunately, they would not be. And again, from the conversation that we just had, if this tool is passed by the city council, it'd also be generated and a one-pager would be created to explain it out. With that, I turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Manager Crumstock. I do see Alderman Budmats with the hand up. So Alderman Budmats, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in reading through the packet, the, the packet doesn't do as good a job as the proposed ordinance in explaining that it's just the city's portion of the sales tax. And I would hate for some business to think that they were going to get a refund of the sales tax, which like the 10%, which could easily exceed the portion that the city would ever collect. So we could be really specific about that the only thing that we're going to be rebating is from the portion that the city receives. And in no way could it ever exceed what the city has received for income, just so that it's really clear. Because I don't know how many businesses realize that the city's piece of the sales tax is very small compared to the state sales tax.
So Alderman Budmats, what I would say is, for that number two, when you see the 15% of sales tax paid to the city, So Alderman Budmats, what I would say is for that number two, when you see the 15% of sales tax paid to the city, we could reimburse, we could actually buff that up a little bit and explaining it's part of our portion that we actually have. But we can put that caveat in there to specifically every time it says to the city, paid to the city. Specifically, it's on the city portion to emphasize what you're trying to say.
Okay, thank you very much. I yield my time.
Thank you, Alderman Budmats. Any other questions, comments, or concerns about this tax generator incentive program? If not, I'm going to lower your hand, Alderman Budmats, and I am going to take a straw vote from the council on those in favor of moving this new sales tax generator incentive program forward.
Mr. Mayor, you may not see a vote from Alderman Bessesi. He stepped out of chambers for.
Okay, I'm yeah, I'm counting the hands right now and I I do only see six.
So obviously, I can't speak for him, but he did just have to excuse himself for a minute.
Okay. We'll we'll give it a hold. I know right now we have Alderman McHale, Veneziano, Budmats, Sanoika, Reyes, and you, Alderman O'Brien. That that is clearly six out of seven. If if Alderman Bessesi returns back momentarily, then we can go ahead and keep it up. But otherwise, staff has a good compass to go by in terms of in terms of who's in favor. So I do want to give Alderman Bessesi the opportunity to come back into the room. One, so he can participate in the next topic to.
And we do appreciate the mayor and the city council for the straw votes on both items. We will have those tentatively scheduled for the first meeting in June with hopefully approval in the second meeting in June.
All right. Well, since there were six out of seven for that, I do want to keep this this meeting moving. It's nine o'clock and we have two more subjects. And I know that the last one will for sure be very in depth. And I I believe the the fifth one here that we're moving on to will have a lot of conversation as well. So for that, let's go ahead and move ourselves to item number five, which is the renewal proposal for the recycling services, which is with Flood Brothers. And for this, I'm going to turn it over to Director Horn once again. Director Horn, do you have a presentation for this particular subject?
No, sir. Thank goodness.
All right. Well, then the floor is yours when you're ready.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. As you note, this item is in response to a letter provided by our current contractor, recycling contractor dated April twenty sixth from Flood Brothers. What they're proposing is is an extension to our current contract for five years. That contract is set to expire June thirtieth of this year. The current contract language allows for up to twenty four additional months extension. As the memo indicates on the first page, there are really three primary items for your consideration tonight. Or variations of the three. The first one is whether we should extend or whether the council wishes to extend the current contract for up to twenty four months. Which time should be defer defined. Whether the council wants to extend the current contract only for as long as is required to rebid the recycling contract services. Or to extend the contract and pursue the implementation of an automated system. It's, you know, I can't speak to the history of why this item hasn't been pursued in the past. My expectation is that it was very much revolved around the cost it would be costs that would be incurred by the city to supply recycling containers for all the residents. We service approximately 6,000 residents. And the containers are on average $60 a piece. So that equates to about $360,000 that if the city were to pay for that, would come entirely from the city budget. Staff had been investigating the opportunity for use for automation. Quite honestly, through conversations with the mayor and and conversations with our staff following, we discovered that it was it was very beneficial for us to pursue this. And the more we looked into it, the more, I guess, excited for the opportunity. We did start having conversations with Flood Brothers over six months ago. I would say six to eight months ago. Unfortunately, at that time, part of the conversation we were looking at was the potential to involve our transfer station and our lease agreement. Unfortunately, at that time, the current the company that currently owns it or operates it, excuse me, doesn't own it, operates it, merged with another large company and as part of the Department of Justice's enforcement of their regulations about monopolies in the area. They required that the lease agreements go to a different company than Flood Brothers. At that time, that kind of derailed our conversations. And so we had requested that Flood Brothers provide the proposal before you, which which is really eighty six cents a month for five years per resident. That equates to about $10.30 a year per resident for five years, which comes out to a little under $60. We believe there's minimal operational costs related to implementing a automated system in that we would have to buy containers to keep in stock annually, just for those that got broken and things like that. Just to walk through the advantages, I know they're listed in the memorandum, so you certainly can follow along. There's a, there's a advantage listed there in two different locations. But the first advantage is the per stop time savings. We've measured this. We believe that we would save between three and five seconds per stop for about 80% of the stops. We use 80% because we believe regardless of whether we had containers or not, there will be about 20% of the community that will always have something outside the container that our guys will have to get out of the truck and load by hand. That that number equates to almost an hour just in save save time every week. It also reduces the potential for workers' comp claims. As the city manager has explained before, we are part of a pool. So while the cost of the workman's comp claims are not direct to the city based on the number we get, there is a cost in losing manpower. So for example, if a person who's on refuse gets hurt and has to perform light duty, then somebody from our current street operation has to go on refuse, thereby eliminating our ability to do certain types of work in other areas. Reduced physical impact on employees. As part of succession planning and and things that were established even before I started, the city made a conscious decision to try and hire new employees at the entry level rate when when employees are young and strong. And hopefully, through working for the department for several years and through retirements, those people would shuffle out of the refuse department into another area of the department to allow them to have long and fulfilling careers here in public works. Unfortunately, we've seen so many retirements in the last 15 years. Those retirement opportunities are not going to be there in the future for a long period of time. That, along with the fact that, as we've talked about before, the starting salary of an entry level refuse driver is about $30,000 a year less than a private sector employee. So our fear is these guys are going to work for a public works department for four or five years in the refuse department. Nothing's going to open up in the department elsewhere and they're going to go work for another municipality. So by having this automation, it will allow us, which is the next item, to improve cross training opportunities. We will be able to take people off of refuse, put them in other areas. What we've learned historically is it's a whole mindset that is in play when you are on refuse, your start times earlier. The impact on your body is different. And our guys really prefer not get moved to refuse unless they're going to do it for a month or longer. Or if it's just a one day fill in for a guy who's sick. So this would improve that as well. Obviously, I know you all know about the next one. We get many, many complaints about animals in trash. And as a result, trash is thrown all over the neighborhood. So obviously, we would, that would eliminate those issues. We also believe that the number of rodents in the area might be reduced as a result of the reduced amount of garbage available to them. The next item on the list, we believe there'll be, we know there'll be an increased value on our vehicle resale right now, even though they're outfitted for what's called Corrado cans, the automated system are called Corrado cans. Even though they're outfitted for them, they they are not equipped with them. So as a result, we get lesser than market value because whoever buys them has to go out and buy that material brand new. Next item is operational cost savings. We save about with the garbage that we have to stop. We we figure each guy spends about an hour to an hour and 20 minutes a a week picking up trash that an animal or the wind or loose debris has strewn around. So we believe that using refuse containers will all but eliminate that. And as a result, that along with the stop time, we believe will save approximately four and a half to five hours a week. Again, that's not actual money in our pocket. But what it does do is it does free up staff people to be able to do other duties and responsibilities that we don't then have to pay somebody else to do like a like a consultant or a contractor or something like that. And the last item that was talked about recently was the cleaner recycling material. We have residents that either intentionally or unintentionally put their solid waste in the recycling container. And when they do that, when we take our whole load of recycling material to the treatment facility, that contaminates all the recycling. And so if you can imagine the cost of recycling, those recycling centers get money for the clean recycling that they can produce and sell to other countries or companies. Well, when, you know, a third of the recycling material is considered dirty or contaminated, that rate goes down as far as what they're able to get and their operational costs don't go down. So this should help keep our recycling material cleaner by giving residents a container to actually put their solid waste in. I I'm not totally pie in the sky. I understand there are disadvantages as are shown on the memorandum. Those disadvantages, though, I feel like I can explain some of them away, but they are there. Capital costs, the initial implementation will require us to buy all the equipment necessary in one year. Each front load refuse vehicle will cost approximately $30,000. And we have one rear load vehicle that will cost approximately 10. So the first year would cost approximately $100,000. We feel like we can absorb that cost by moving. Our our purchasing policy right now is to replace a refuse a refuse vehicle every eight years. So we have it on an every other year replacement schedule. We feel like we could move everything off one year and still be okay and still get value on our trade ins and be able to absorb the $100,000. There is a concern by residents that they have limited space in their garages or the containers are too heavy for them to carry. I would just remind the council that in that regard, as far as no space, talked to a lot of different refuse communities or refuse contractors and communities. And typically, within three to six months, any resident concerned about location has found a spot for their their refuse container. And it is a pretty short lived problem. In regard to things being too heavy, we would look into having the contractor provide options for sizes. So for example, if a large fa- a family that produced a large amount of recycling wanted a larger container, they might be able to get that for an additional fee. And they may be able to get a smaller container, a 32 gallon container for a lesser fee. In any case, as we do with all of our seniors and disabled residents, we do offer backyard or backdoor service for all of our refuse customers who meet a certain criteria. That would not stop. And again, the last, one of the last items, as far as the disadvantages, there will be a short term cost increase. We are acknowledging that residents would have to pay about $10, $10, you know, $10 and a half dollars a year extra to their bill for five years. But in in I use the word perspective and I I was talking to Joellen earlier and, you know, it it's really less than two cups of Starbucks lattes are are more than what they would pay annually. So it is really a minimal cost over of over the long term for what the city stands to gain. And there will be a slight increase in operational costs. Every year, we will have to budget a few thousand dollars to make sure we have inventory available in the event that somebody's container gets broken or needs it replaced because it was stolen or whatever the case might be. Those are the disadvantages of of implementing an automated system. The one important thing, I tried to reiterate it in my memorandum and I will reiterate it in this discussion or presentation. There is no change in service proposed. We are going to do everything we currently do. If you put it in the parkway for the city regulations, we will take it just like we do now. This this only will serve to enhance an already wonderful service that the city provides to its residents. So again, I believe that so long as, well, excuse me, I I'm sorry. I believe that the negative, the positives far outweigh the negatives if we were to look to implement this in the near future. Lastly, I don't want to ignore the fact that I understand we did do a survey as part of the chipper program that was discussed in recent months. While those results, if you recall, were not generally favorable. Again, I I always concern myself when we only look at numbers. Because when you look at the literally hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of comments we receive, you could tell that the real concerns regarding the refuse were related to the service was going to get changed, there was going to be a reduction in public work staff, and we were going to reduce our senior services. I truly believe that if we were to do a another survey or if if those questions were framed or those answers were framed in such a way that it answered for the survey participants, that nothing was going to change from our current service with the exception of getting a refuse container, I think the results would be dramatically different. And obviously, Mayor, I have, at the end of the memo, I have several questions that require you and the city council to weigh in on. But I am available for questions at this time.
Yeah, thank you, Director Horn. And before I get into questions, because this has been a passion pursuit of mine for for years. You know, Manager Crumstock and I have discussed this over two years ago. You and I, Director Horn, we discussed it more than a year ago, at least from the operations and logistics perspectives. And then as as an alderman on the fourth ward, when the first round of chickens came up and the residents that were in an uproar about that, talking about attracting more coyotes, raccoons, environment of that nature, the the key to to reducing the varment of that. The, the key to, to reducing the varmint of that kind is to control our refuse. And so I've, I've really been addressing this behind the scenes since I was an alderman. And, and I do believe that the evolution of our process and the mechanization promoting the efficiencies and the savings that it, that will provide for us is very important for us as a city to move forward. I do know with our discussion that you and I shared with Assistant Director Charlton, Manager Crumstock and Finance Director Gallagher, that this transition, i- from my position, will not be put on the residents from a financial perspective. That's, that's not what we're intending to do. That's not at all where I want to go with this. This is a transition in service that will be consumed by the city. As far as increasing costs that we're going to see going forward, we have an increase in costs just from a new contract from that perspective. With our current Flood Brothers contract, it has been escalating from the time we had the three years in this initial round. It went up incrementally throughout that duration. And whether we stick with Flood Brothers or pursue another vendor, the, the price and the cost to residents is not going to stay what it is today anyway. I do think that the most important thing, which you, you took all the points that I wanted to make sure we drive home is that there is no deviation in our services since the refuse is collected in-house. We don't have any restrictions on what goes to the curb. That wouldn't change just because we had these plastic totes. And that the savings we do generate from a weekly to annual perspective is in the tens of thousands. It doesn't sound like a lot when you say an hour and a half a week or two hours a week. But when you look at it annually, that is savings. And though it might not be physical tangible dollars, it's dollars that are not being spent and not going out of pocket. And so it does amount to something important as we move forward with this. I do want to open it up to the, the council so they can speak on behalf of the, the constituents in their ward and clarify any ambiguity or confusion or concern that might be around. But there isn't anything that shouldn't be a positive when we look at our human resources, the toll that refuse takes on our workers and the longevity that you try to get out of them. In addition to how we can keep our, our streets and neighborhoods clean if we're keeping our refuse contained in a better, in a better receptacle. And so I do see some hands coming up, so I'll start with Alderman Bessesi and then Veneziano.
Okay. Couple, couple of things. First off, I do appreciate that you mentioned that if we have a resident who decides they want to just stick this thing in the backyard and never use it, that's okay. My one concern is about, although I know the refuse bill may have to go up just because of the state of our refuse fund, regardless of whether we do this or not. It was clear in the survey residents do not want any increase, period, in their refuse bills. The, with that said, I would support this. You know, I'm, I'm struggling with my own things and that our council decided that we did not care about the residents regarding the chipper program. But I would definitely support this and I think it's a good way for us to be heading. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Bessesi. Alderman Veneziano?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Director Horn, one of my questions would be, and I actually had a couple seniors ask me this. If we potentially went to a canister system within the community, would there be an opportunity for seniors to essentially opt out of it? I know a lot of seniors, they put down like a jewel sized garbage bag. And so to even, I know that, that we offer the backdoor service, but so that they even potentially then did not have the increase in their bill. Is that something we could potentially do?
I'd certainly be willing to talk to our, our current contract contractor as well as Bill Sucheky, who's the Public Works Superintendent. I, at first blush, I would feel like I'd be a lot more open to that, especially seniors or disabled residents who don't generate the, the amount as opposed to someone who just doesn't want to do it. But again, I, I would like to talk about that, that impact on our operation. I don't think it would be that dramatic because as I said, I, I talked at length with representatives from the community just north of us, Buffalo Grove. And they had huge outcries and huge changes in service. And, and within six months, it was nothing. Like everybody had a spot in the garage, everyone put their, and, and there was no issue. So I, I, my expectation, you know as well as I do, Alderman Veneziano, we try to help our seniors anytime we can. So my expectation is that would not be a problem. I would just want to talk about it before I gave a definitive yes or no.
Sure, I appreciate that. So that would be my only real reservation. So to, to, to just kind of help with the fixed incomes. I totally agree for, you know, a family, just because they don't want the increase. And so I don't want the can because I don't want to pay the increase. That's not the option that we're offering. But for seniors or, you know, fixed income, you know, disabled type, you know, situations, I would like to have, you know, to see if we can offer, you know, some options. Other than that, I am in full support, I think, is, as council members, we've all heard it from residents. You know, what can we do, you know, about the animals and this and that? So I think we're moving in the right direction. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Veneziano. Two quick things, I think it's important that we either hear from Manager Crumstock or Finance Director based on the position that as we move forward and we're concluding this current contract and we have to pursue a new contract, whether it's with the current vendor or a potential new vendor. And the rates that are currently out in the market are not what we're currently paying. What is that impact to residents and our refuse bill in the future? Are we going to see an increase, whether it's a slight nominal increase or a significant increase based on whatever rates we see with either the renewal of, of this contract or if we get a new contract with a new vendor? Where do we stand on the projections for refuse cost in our bills?
The current projection that we had, because for multiple years now, we've held that rate. And obviously, we're at the bottom of the fund balance policy. There would be a slight increase that would be necessary to maintain that fund where it is. And again, that's from our estimates that we keep on seeing. And, and as we've kept the rate consistent for multiple years, it was always the idea that some of the fund balance would go down, but we are at the bottom level at this point in time without any changes. So it would need an increase for next year.
So an influx is necessary regardless of totes or not? And in that case, I think, and this is just from, from my, my perspective and conversation with residents, if there's an influx necessary anyway, and, and we, as residents, do have to make a contribution at some capacity, we may as well make the least amount of contribution financially for the, the greatest impact to our service and what we receive as residents. And this is the time to explore that opportunity. And for getting another tote in our, our, in our garage or, or in, in our, in our causeways or wherever we keep them. You know, there's residents now who continue to buy the, the paper bags and take their plastic bags out of their, their kitchens and put them in paper bags. This may be able to forfeit that purchase of those paper bags, however often they do, to offset whatever incremental cost that goes up in our refuse bill. So there are trade-offs with the finances if our cost does increase because it, it, it's ultimately inevitable. But if we have these totes, then we don't have to make an individual cost to purchase the paper bags that we stick our plastic trash bags in, in our garbage until it's our weekly refuse pickup time. Alderman O'Brien, I did see your hand up, so I'll, I'll let you go next and then Alderman Budmats to follow.
Thanks, Ms. Mayor, and I'll be a quick on this. Hopefully, two quick hitters for Director Horn, then one maybe looking into your crystal ball based on the two calls I got. Just to confirm, I think we hit on that as if I am in support of this going forward, based on the calls I've received and things like that. Can you explain the process? We would still do, like for the refuse container, people would still put them in supposedly a plastic bag, a bra, and then put them in the refuse, or can it just go in the container? It doesn't have to be contained because I know last year when I had our first chat with you about, oh, just a resident can go buy a 30 gallon Rubbermaid, but then it's still have to be tied. Can you just kind of talk through the process? Because the follow-up to that, and I'll get two for the price of one. The two calls I had for residents on, and one sent me a follow-up note, is looking into our crystal ball, and this is where we'll all put on our crystal ball hat. They're hearing, being in the industry, one of the residents in the industry, that the recycling may not be the thing of the future because it is getting so contaminated, as you clearly called out, that in the next five years, if we do go forward with this, are we going to potentially be paying for something that might not be needed if it really is contaminated and the other countries don't want to buy?
Yeah, and I'm really glad you brought that up. A- as far as the crystal ball, five years from now, I don't know that I can answer that. I, I think I'd be doing us all wrong if I tried to come up with an answer for that. As far as the price right now, I will say that is one of the concerns. And I, I had noted it, that I wanted to bring it up to the council before we got to the questions is what I'm hearing from our executive director at Swank and from what I've heard from area, area communities is they have, they are having their contracts, price escalators that they've had to institute to increase the recycling pickup costs. So, you know, I, I'm not here to say that the proposal provided is, is great or, or bad or whatever. I'm just hearing that, that the costs are increasing. So to get a proposal like that, that is, is well within the range that we, you know, our, our community is used to spending. I think is a good thing because to your point, Alderman O'Brien, my fear is by going out to bid is we might end up paying a lot more for it as a result. That, that's just my guess. The other part of the question was the containers. So we, with, with solid waste, we don't want to use a plastic bin or whatever in lieu of placing the bagged garbage in the parkway at this time. When we have the containers, we would request that the solid waste be bagged and placed in the container. It is not a garbage can. It is a refuse container. So we, you don't want to be in a situation, that's why a lot of residents, they use it as a garbage can and it gets dirty and smelly and it's in their garage and they don't like it. But we always recommend that you put your garbage in a garbage bag and then put it into the refuse container. When it comes to recyclable, they are okay with you putting the recyclables loose in the refuse, or the recycling container, provided it is clean. That's one of the big things is, is we have gotten so used to, the mentality used to be just throw it in there, the, the sorters will clean it out. And that's changed dramatically. Now they want you to clean out, you know, when you have that jar of spaghetti sauce, you should run it underwater, shake it out, make sure it's clean and then put it in the recycling. You can put that loosely into your container. That's the difference.
Great, thank you. And then just one last question too, and this, this might be going ahead too far, so let me know and we can circle back then. If this is approved at council and the new rates, because the contract expires June 1st, clearly we'd have to retro outfit because I wouldn't be in support of doing one and not the other. That we say, yes, let's get the totes, but not let's retro outfit the trucks with the new grabbers or whatever the official term is, is that there'd obviously be a delay for that, I would imagine. Because we can't outfit the trucks overnight. So the new rate would be effective in theory, June 1st. Totes might be here by the fall and the trucks would be outfitted by end of year type thing?
We'll have to talk to the vendors. Every, every, I, I've done more research on refuse in the last two years than I, I think I've ever done in my life. What I have found is you definitely want to give yourself four to six months of time to implement the program. You don't want to rush this out. It, it causes confusion and panic and, and it would, it would, it would be a four to six month process regardless of the capital equipment. So once we find out about the capital equipment, what it would take, as you know, with building supply materials and, and things backed up everywhere, I have no idea of how long that might take. But again, you know, one, once we get the word that this is worth pursuing, which I'm getting the sense that it is at least worth pursuing, at least from this information, we'll set our guys loose and have them start bird dogging some of this information.
Great, thanks. That would be helpful because I could just see, and rightfully so, being a resident myself is, oh, I've seen my bill go up for six months, but I haven't got my container yet and I haven't seen the, the trucks come out and pick it up with the container yet. That's the only place I was going with that. So appreciate it. That's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. And Alderman O'Brien, it, we do have for the, the series of straw votes, Director Horn did put a footnote in about the potential timeframe from six to 12 months for outfitting the vehicles. And so we'll, we'll obviously have more information as, as the votes progress and we know which way we're going. Director Horn will be able to provide the council with a more detailed timeline on when the implementation, when the actual installations will occur so we can keep residents apprised if this is the avenue we go down.
Right, thank you.
Alderman Budmats?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, I recall when we signed the contract with Flood Brothers originally that one of the, there was incentives about repairing their old bins and how can I say this? That there was, there was money for bins basically. And I think, so the question is, if we were to go out to bid with other contractors, even though we might pay a little bit more in the long haul on for the refuse or the, excuse me, the, the recycling pickup, is there a chance that the overall cost incurred in getting bins might be lowered because of the incentives that some of these companies offer by signing a five-year deal with them? That you are going to get X number of dollars towards repair or replacement of bins?
Yeah, I, I think Manager Crumstock's hand is in the air, maybe he has an answer. I do have something, but certainly like to give him an opportunity.
Yeah, I was going to say, let Manager Crumstock speak and then Director Horn, not to show all your cards, but we did discuss this i- in our, in our meeting. And I think it'd be important for you to share kind of the, the approach you were planning to take in order for us to then make the appropriate decisions when we pull out straw votes. So Manager Crumstock, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Obviously, as you alluded to, we have done some thinking about that. And we can go out as our own through, obviously, we're not a large municipality, but obviously the GFLs, the Waste Management, they buy these in bulk. And we can always approach them about their right. But you are correct, many times when we go out for an RFP for recycling, we do look for some of those additional incentives to actually get a product and that would be the recycling bin. So when, if and when, and again, we can do this for a short term with Flood Brothers, that gives us time to put out the RFP that allows us to put in all the incidentals. If we get your containers or if we utilize a container company for something else. But there are ways of reducing that price. It's just how do you package it, as you stated, Alderman Budmats? It's all in the packaging, but how do you deal with it? Then we also have to deal with any of the replacements. So is that part of the package for who's ever doing the additional processes with us? But those are all things after we have the straw vote that we continue doing some of the research on. And then the other thing is just going back into the crystal ball. Obviously, here in the Midwest, we're a little bit behind on certain other places. And, and Swank, what we talk about is that there's food scraps that's out there. And how do you deal with that in some of the biodiversity that we talk about at that point in time? But right now, we're only dealing with what we know about with refuse and the bagging and how we do that overall. And again, if, and again, this is one of the questions that's in there is if we go for a short extension with Flood Brothers, that allows us to get the RFP out, that allows us to put in all the other pieces. If we're going to purchase, if we find through some vendor, we're getting a great discount or through the vendors for the recycling, because they buy in such bulk. The one caveat that the mayor did here when we had that meeting, we do want to make sure that we are getting good recycling bins, garbage bins. I just have to refer back to what happened in a municipality pretty much to the east of us, that they had some inferior recycling bins. And we want to make sure that does not happen here in Rolling Meadows.
Thank you very much for that answer. I yield my time.
Thank you, Alderman Budmats. Director Horn, do you have more to add to Manager Crumstock's explanation?
I, I apologize, I, I can't recall the exact specifics of the question. I apologize, I, I can't recall the exact specifics of the question, but if we do go out to bid, if that's the choice of the council, then we certainly would put language in the contract that ensured that we, we A had equipment or containers for ourselves and also made sure that they were of a, of a quality that that wouldn't be a concern. So I don't, I don't feel like I'm answering the question, but I, I do agree with Manager Crumstock, we would do that. The, the one thing I, I want to, you know, I have no connection to Flood Brothers, but there, there is a section of the memo that talks about the customer service we provide or that, that is provided us as the customer from Flood Brothers. I want to make sure that the council is all aware that they are a locally owned company. They actually hired the previous driver from the company that they, that they won the bid from when they were the contractor. And that as a result, the transition was seamless. I think we received one or two complaints during that transition. As when it happened the years prior and there was a transition from one contractor to the next, there were enormous problems with the service, which I can recall Manager Crumstock actually called the meeting with Flood Brothers to make sure that didn't happen on, you know, with this new contract. So I just want to be clear that there is a level of service that we expect out of these contractors. And as contractors continually merge with each other and get bigger and bigger and bigger, the level of service to communities goes down and down and down. Unless, unless you pay a dramatically higher rate. And that, that is my only fear about, you know, and again, I've been proven wrong before, but you know, my only fear about rebidding the contract is that it comes back at a higher rate than is proposed. And we have lesser service problems with the new pickup company and things like that. So again, all things to weigh in making our decision, but I just want to make sure council is aware of that unless you missed it, in case you missed it in the memorandum.
Well, to that, to that point, Director Horn, in terms of quality control in the transition, and if we were to pursue, if the council was to pursue renewing the contract with Flood Brothers for a longer period of time than, than just enough time to rebid for a public RFP to multiple vendors, there would, would there be an opportunity in this renewal with Flood to have them be the provider of new recycling totes? And these current totes that we have just be, just be alternated so that our, either we keep the, the current tote as the recycling bin or if Flood Brothers was to provide new totes in this new contract, that we then use the new tote for the trash and vice versa. Is there opportunity for that if, if the council needs to know this in advance before making decisions?
Yes, Mayor, I'm sorry, that, that really, I, I know what you're talking about now. That, that was the idea of our, our superintendent, Bill Sucheky, and, and I think it's an outstanding idea. What we would ask is that Flood Brothers provide new recycling containers. The standard size would be 65 gallon unless we could talk to them about a different size based on desire by a resident. And what we would do is all the refuse containers or, excuse me, all the recycling containers that are currently out there today are actually owned by the city of Rolling Meadows. What we would do is we would go around after the recycling containers are distributed by Flood Brothers and we would put stickers over the section of our lids that say recycling. And those would be the new solid waste container. So as a result, we would not have to get new containers for our use. The new containers would be coming solely from the recycling company for their, their use. And if for some reason, four years or five years from now, whatever contract you guys choose to allow, we had a different vendor, well, Flood Brothers would pick up all their containers and the new vendor would put all, all their own containers there. So that way we're completely out of the recycling container business and we don't have to worry about turnover on containers. That will be the requirement of Flood Brothers in the future.
Okay, thank you for that. And I do see Manager Crumstock put his hand up. Manager Crumstock, do you have something to add to that or something different?
That was pretty much what we were going to say is that how we talked about, and we do appreciate Bill's ideas. Again, doing a flip flop and then obviously making sure that people understood which one it is. We also talked about maybe the vendor had to have a different top, a different color top, but we've been talking about some of those ideas overall.
Okay, and then Alderman Besessi?
Yes, I, I got a question, you know, with, with the flip flop and everything. I know there's residents, me being one of them, that have more than one recycling tub. We had to purchase the second one at a cost of, I think it was $60. Would both of those then become refuse containers? And we would wind up buying? Because we go, we actually do fill two recycling tubs almost every week. So I'm kind of wondering, will we then have to buy a second? Another one if we wanted to recycle more than one cans worth of recyclables?
You know what? That's a great question, Alderman Besessi.
Because I know we're not the only ones that have that.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I, I'd like to get that information from our vendor and Bill. My guess is that answer would be no, since you already paid for it. I just don't want to say it yet until I, till I discuss that issue operationally. You know, there might be the opportunity as well to get a larger container in lieu of your two refuse containers. They make, I think our containers are 65 gallon. They make 96 gallon or 95 gallon containers. That might be an opportunity for you to start out with and then see if that's sufficient for you and then we can move forward from there. But I will definitely find out what the impacts of that would be for multiple residents who have multiple containers.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Besessi. If there, are there any other questions, comments or concerns on this subject before I get into the straw votes here for direction for staff? Seeing no further hands, I'm going to take it a little bit out of order, Director Horn. I'm going to start with asking if the council is in favor of pursuing the implementation of automated refuse collection. So those in favor of pursuing the automated collection? It's unanimous with Alderman, Sanoyka, Veniziano, O'Brien, Budmats, Reyes and Besessi and Mikhail. And then now I'll circle back to question one about staff and the extension of the current contract with Flood Brothers. The first, and I'll read through all three, so we're aware of them in the order they are. To extend the contract with just enough time required to rebid the collection services or extend for five years with the intent to incorporate the ability to provide automated collection services or five years with no intention to incorporate automated collection of services. So we can now discount the third one because we have direction to pursue that. So those in favor of just pursuing with enough time required to rebid the collection services out to the greater public, those in favor of just enough time to rebid. And I see Alderman Budmats, Sanoyka and Mikhail, thank you. And those opposed to the just enough time required to rebid the collection services, those opposed. That's Alderman, Veniziano, Besessi, O'Brien and Reyes. Okay, so that's four opposed. Now moving on to the next question. For five years with the intent to incorporate the ability to provide automated collection services. Those in favor of five years with the intent. Alderman, Veniziano, Besessi, Reyes and O'Brien. Okay, and those opposed to the five year pursuit with incorporating automated services, those opposed to five years. Alderman Budmats, Sanoyka and Mikhail. All right, so it looks like the five years with the intent to incorporate is the winner out of these two, if that was done correctly. We canceled out the first one and then had a majority for the five year pursuit with automated collection. So staff, you have your marching orders from a straw vote to pursue five year extension with automated services. And the third question here, the city container is currently a 65 gallon container that would be used for regular refuse. Does the council wish to offer a larger container? Should a resident choose to pay for the added costs smaller if available? So basically, we're voting to see if we can have a customization of containers here. So does the council wish to offer larger containers should a resident choose to pay for the added costs or smaller one if available? Those in favor of having the customization approach. So it's Alderman, Mikhail, Sanoyka, O'Brien, Besessi, Veniziano, Budmats and Reyes. So it's unanimous to go ahead and, and approach the vendor with a customized order for the container. And then the fourth question, are there specific funding opportunities or current revenue areas that the city would recommend staff investigate to offset the cost? So privately, when we had our meeting between Assistant Director Charlton, Director Horn, Manager Crumstock and Finance Director Gallagher, you know, I did make mention that we do have a couple of new revenue streams with the decriminalization, legalization of cannabis for recreational use, which has come in in addition to gaming. But I did also pose the question that I, I do want staff to help us with the strategy in defining or identifying specific funding opportunities that the council should hear about. So if there are any ideas from the council, that would be appreciated, raise your hand and share those now. But otherwise, I do want staff to help the council understand what staff can do creatively, having an intimacy with the budget and the daily operations and where we can find different opportunities or revenue areas. So I'll wait for hands if there's any suggestions from council. Otherwise, we'll just allow that to play out as the future plays out. So it doesn't look like there's any feedback on funding opportunities, new revenue areas. So with that, staff, Manager Crumstock, Director Horn, do you believe you have clear enough answers to move forward for our recycling contract and the mechanization of refuse collection?
Yes, I think that we do have the direction for the five years with the automation, but we will also talk to them about the recycling bins, but we will, or garbage bins, whichever one, but we have our discussion items that we have enough direction.
Perfect. And I'm sorry about that. I was looking for a head nod. I should have said that, but I think we're, we're good to go from there. Without any further ado, we have one last topic this evening, which is the elected officials training. We're approaching 10 o'clock, but don't feel like you're, you're rushed through this, Attorney Wolf, this is extremely important. Just let me know if you need the monitor for sharing a presentation and we'll go from there.
Yes, thank you.
I'm sorry, I see Alderman Sanoyka's hand. Let me get to her before we completely transition. I apologize. Alderman Sanoyka?
I, I would just like to move to reschedule the elected training for a, a separate meeting. Is it possible to, is it possible to reschedule this for a meeting with the city council and Attorney Wolf? So that staff is not required for this section?
So we can explore that. I did talk with Manager Crumstock last week when reviewing the agenda items, knowing that this would go long. Unfortunately, and I, we, there's, this, I'm not closing the suggestion out right here, but unfortunately, next month's committee of the whole is getting equally as long. And so I'm not sure if, if you're then asking for us to schedule a completely different day where we hold this for the council. So staff doesn't need to participate necessarily, but moving it to next month, for example, would, would only rob Peter to pay Paul, so to speak.
Understood. So my motion then would be to reschedule item number six from tonight's agenda to a separate day within the next two weeks so that it's just city staff and the city attorney. So that way we, we can let staff go home for tonight.
Okay, and with that, just to be clear, we will have to post the meeting and follow all open meeting acts policies, just so, so you know that.
Correct.
24 hours, 48 hours in advance notice to public. And Attorney Wolf, do you believe that this is better for you for the presentation for us to deviate? Or what, what's your thought on this as you're the presenter?
I, you know, I will defer to the will of the council on this. I, I do know it is late. It, you know, as stated in the summary provided, I, I really intended also on meeting with the individual members of the council to do one-on-one or two-on-one training. And so I'm happy to do that as well. And, and we can do that in addition to, you know, a special meeting, if that's what the council would like to do. But you know, I'm happy, it depends on the council's availability. Either way, I, I'm willing to move forward at your direction.
Then that's fine. We can go ahead and take a straw vote to change to a different date. And then within the parameters like Alderman Sanoyka recommended, within the next two weeks, of course, what we could do is work offline to schedule that date and then follow all the OMA rules, regulations for posting that meeting for the public's knowledge. So Alderman Besessi, I do see your hand is up. Go ahead real quick and then I want to go ahead and post that straw vote on this conversation.
Very quick, I was gonna A, second her, her, her thought, but also I'm wondering, June 1st might be a good, a good date for that. Given we don't have a council or a committee of the whole and it is within only a few weeks so that we can get our newer members of the council through the training especially.
Sure, that's, that's perfect. That's a date to consider. So we'll work on identifying that date offline here if the council does wish to, to reschedule. So I'm going to go ahead and ask for those in favor of postponing this agenda item to a later date within the next two weeks. All right, I see Alderman, Veniziano, Sanoyka, Budmats, Besessi, Reyes and Mikhail. All right, so that's six. Those opposed to, to deviating and changing from tonight to another date, those opposed. Alderman O'Brien. Apologies, Alderman O'Brien, but it looks like we will be changing to another date and we'll work, I will go ahead and coordinate with Attorney Wolf on a good date for her. We'll keep June 1st in mind, Alderman Besessi. And we'll, we'll see if other schedules, Alderman O'Brien, I'm assuming you might have some schedule conflicts, not sure, but we'll try and work so that it's advantageous to all of us going forward. With that, yes.
If you can also remember that June 1st is also the Planning and Zoning Commission scheduled and posted meeting.
Yes, and that's why I think there's going to have to be a little bit of planning offline of tonight's call. The good news is that we do meet remotely, so there, there shouldn't be a hiccup or a hurdle with that. I do know that there's some staff that have to be in P and Z versus here, but we'll, we'll work, we'll identify a date offline from, from tonight now to, to get this buttoned up. So at this time, I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka and the second from Alderman Veniziano. Now for that, I do have to have an actual vote called. So would the clerk please call roll?
Besessi?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Sanoyka?
Yes.
Mikhail?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Veniziano?
With seven in favor and then opposed, this meeting is now adjourned. Have a wonderful evening, everybody. We'll talk to you soon.
Good night.
Good night.